To order. Ms. Maria, if you could please call the roll.
Ms. Schilling?
Here.
Ms. Senyard?
Present.
Ms. Shulist?
Here.
Mr. McDonald?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Butler? Mr. Callie?
Here.
Mr. Magner?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Thank you. Everyone will rise for the opening prayer and pledge. Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather here today. Be with us as we consider what's before us and guide us to sound decisions through constructive discussion and debate. Give us patience and understanding throughout the process. In your name we pray, amen.
Pledge and reasons to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to the approval of the agenda.
Vote for approval.
Second.
Johnson, Williams. Ms. Maria, if you will call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Caw.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. Magner?
Aye.
I also vote aye.
Mr. McDonald?
All right, we will move on to citizen comments. Do we have any this evening?
We do.
Okay.
We have two.
If you want, just call the first on the list up and then...
Don Hand?
Please state your name and address.
Don Hand, 7212 Braxton Bend Drive, Fairview, Tennessee.
Thank you.
I was just, I spoke with these gentlemen over here and they kind of answered a lot of my questions that I was asking. I just wanted to make sure that some of this zoning and stuff was not going to be bringing in a bunch of apartments and things of that nature. And it appears there's some townhouses that will possibly go in. And they mentioned that, you know, like 1,200, I believe, units so far that are going to be planned. It's nothing, I mean, already been... Right, residences.
Ethan, sir, it's just the citizen comments portion is just you, giving you a chance to speak and us hear you. It's not unfortunately a back and forth discussion. So if you just speak whatever you would like for us to hear.
Okay, basically...
Sorry about that, thank you.
Basically, I didn't want to have apartments and stuff like that coming in. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you say there was another one? Okay.
Mr. Pape?
Good evening, everybody. Jeff Pape, 7114, sorry, that was a little loud, 7114 Elrod Road. I just want to speak really quickly on ironically two, both agenda items. Number one, the two multifamily zonings that are up tonight. Just really quick, it was interesting, I was looking at both the applications and it's a little ironic that they're both up at the same meeting because there are two sites that have an interesting similarity. Obviously, they're both large sites on a highly traveled corridor. But the interesting thing is they both have two different designations. There are single pieces of property with two different designations in the 2040 comp plan. Both of them have a commercial land use designation up front and then transitional residential for the rear of the parcels. And it's just a unique quality that you don't see on too many sites and have both of them come forward in one meeting, I thought was interesting. And with both of them asking for straight multifamily zoning, it just feels like they're not consistent with the 2040 plan, number one. And the main concern with that is the fact that, one thing I hear around town a lot is people want more retail, they want more restaurants, they want more shopping options. And that was discussed by Ms. Schilling in one of the last meetings. And if you zone these straight multifamily, you potentially give that up. And, you know, are they good retail sites today? You know, I don't know that a retailer will show up today, but if they go complete multifamily, I think in the future you give up the opportunity of two really strong commercial sites, potential commercial sites. So how do you solve that problem with this unique situation of two different classifications in the future land use plan? And, you know, our zoning code has some challenges and needs some work, but one really great tool in there is the POD zoning. And I don't know that we've used that really correctly much thus far here in Fairview. And these are two ideal sites for POD zoning, to have some type of mix of commercial up front, residential transition in the back. And also that POD zoning would give the city a lot more control over it. I know likely our city attorney is going to remind you that you have to act on the application in front of you tonight, which is a request for straight zoning. But I think in the discussion, if it was, you know, the direction of the board that you feel it's not consistent with the comp plan, you can certainly talk about POD zoning that might give the applicant some indication of what could possibly be more successful in the future if the application is turned down. But I just wanted to kind of throw out there that POD zoning is just, you know, very, very specific to this. Literally, if you read the purpose and intent paragraph, it talks about large tracts of land that require multiple uses that can't be achieved by traditional zoning. So I think it's just ideal for POD zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it, just the two? All right. We will move on to the approval of the minutes, starting with the September 12th, 2023 work session.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Callie Magner. Ms. Maria, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. Magner?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling? Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
We'll move on to the approval of the minutes for the September 12th, 2023 regular meeting, planning commission meeting. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Callie Shulist, Ms. Maria, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling? Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Magner?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Finally, the approval of the minutes for the September 21st, 2023 special call planning commission meeting. Is there a motion?
I move we accept the minutes from the special call meeting on September 21st, 2023.
Second.
Williams, Johnson. You would call the roll, please.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? Ms. Schilling? Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. Magner?
Aye.
Thank you. You have one item under old business, PC Resolution PC 29-23 rezoning Bark East LLC, 2451 Fairview Boulevard, 39.17 acres, map 046 parcel 87.00. Current zoning CG Commercial General. Proposed zoning RM 12 multifamily. Property owner Bark East LLC. Is... This is old business, so it's a, we have to address it since it was deferred a month ago. Staff, if you have comments that you'd like to provide?
This item was deferred for 30 days, and so it appears as old business on this agenda. The applicant has communicated to staff that they would like to table this indefinitely and that eventually they may come back in with another different proposal at a later date. But currently for this application, they would like to table this item.
Make a motion to table, PC 2923. Second.
Callie Magner, is there anybody who would like to add discussion?
With tabling it, does it stay on the agenda indefinitely as old business?
No, ma'am, it'll be on the agenda, it won't be on the agenda. If it's not taken from the table before the next, before the end of the next scheduled meeting, then it falls off the agenda completely. So at any time before the end of the next scheduled meeting, it could be taken from the table by a motion. If it's not done by that, then it's completely gone and it has to be rebrought.
The requested proposal here mentioned indefinitely, so do we take that language into account?
I think it was deferred to a specific meeting and with the applicant not asking for another deferral, I think that's indicative of their intent to have it removed until they can resubmit a new application. So I think because they didn't request a deferral, because they're asking for it to be tabled, the applicant's requesting it be taken off the agenda.
I would like to add, I think, having a month to think about it, I personally felt that the deferral was probably something, in my opinion, a mistake that we made. The citizens are pretty outspoken about this. I think the board has made it pretty clear that this does not fit the 2040 plan, our future zoning ideas for that area. I think tabling it, though, yes, it puts an end to it for now, sends the wrong message. It makes, it might confuse the citizens to make them think that it's just a play to keep it on the back burner. Personally, I would like to see us take action on this and vote no on the proposed. But that's just my opinion. Does anyone else have anything to add?
I agree. I mean, I mean, he used the language indefinitely in his request, so I don't see why it's something that needs to be brought up again.
I don't think he presented last time, so I don't think we should be taking action other than to table it and get it off the agenda until he presents something new.
If it is voted no, is he able to come forward again and present something different?
Absolutely. And also, we can't take action tonight because he's not present either.
I agree with Commissioner Johnson. Yes, he could bring another application. And I think it would be imprudent to vote on something without input from the applicant.
Fair enough. Any other comments or discussion? We do have a motion to table. Ms. Maria, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. Magner?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling? Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Motion passes to table PC Resolution PC 2923, eight to zero. Moving on to new business, PC Resolution PC 31-23 rezoning Cortera Fairview Boulevard, 36.16 acres, map 042, parcel 42.00. Current zoning, other nonconforming, proposed zoning RM 8 multifamily. Property owner, owner DeWarka Farms LLC. Do we have a motion so we can discuss it?
I make a motion. To discuss?
Well...
To approve?
Yeah.
For discussion?
There a second?
All second.
Shulist, Senyard. And then we will start with staff comments.
This project was brought in last month and it was given the disapproval of the planning commission. The applicant has heard those remarks and has taken those and made several changes to their conceptual of what they would like to provide in that same spot. They are still requesting a RM 8 zone designation. And with that, I believe that the applicant has a short presentation to show you, demonstrate what they have changed in their application.
Thank you. Gentlemen, if you could just please state your name so everyone is familiar with you and then go ahead.
Good evening, good to be here again. My name is Kevin O'Brien. My colleague Ray Crocker, we work for the Cortera Division of Lennar. And we're excited to talk to you guys again. We believe we heard your feedback last time, we've incorporated it. I want to be clear in talking with Ethan and hopefully he can help. We are presenting a different proposal tonight that would not be fully RM 8. The post office currently is not. It would be a split zoning, but the way I understand that works is it would be subject to, we have to separate those parcels after we take ownership and we would have two different zonings. I'll get into that. Do we have our PowerPoint running? Awesome. So just to refresh the site location that we're talking about tonight, it's approximately 36 acres located at the corner of Highway 96 and 100 with the current United States Post Office residing on it. The current zoning is OTNC, except for where the post office is, which is commercial, but that's other nonconforming, more of a placeholder when the zoning code was put in place for a future rezone. The site does have some significant challenges, access being the primary one. There are topographical challenges, there's drainways throughout the sites, electrical easements, T-dot easements, and likely a significant amount of rock. The site also has dangerous access both to the post office and Thompson's Kitchen. These are all things we've taken into account. These are things we actually intend and would like to improve with the coordination of T-dot and the city of Fairview. We are seeking an RM 8 rezone here and commercial to accommodate our townhome development and a future commercial pad that we do believe brings us even more in line with the 2040 comprehensive plan. We could go, so this is the plan we brought last time. Again, we are not at site plan proposal, this is just a rendering. However, we have adapted this to show what we intend to do with the rezone. We could go to the next slide. I want to highlight what's been changed here. First of all, density was reduced from 220 to 195 primarily to accommodate a little bit more green space. We've added an amenity, we're showing a dog park here, that's something that's been freed up. We believe that this will free up even more our turn radius, which is going to be required as we've talked with Chief Hughes. But most importantly, we're going to cordon off the front entrance that in the beginning we wanted to be a commercial node. We believe it will now be even more of a commercial node. That's where we'll correct the entrance between our post office and Thompson's Kitchen to square up with the median. We're going to propose to build 5,000 additional square feet of commercial pads, shifting the parking lot to the back. That would open up more green space in the front. We would be keeping the post office as a tenant for now. Obviously, that's their lease we need to honor in the future, that could change over. We would imagine this additional commercial space would tie in with an updated post office building. And we've allowed room for an outdoor dining pad. I mean, again, we were pretty clear with the feedback last time, the market will determine this space, but we could see that being a sandwich shop, an ice cream shop, a coffee shop, probably more of your neighborhood serving retail right now. We think this is a space, as we look at our business plan, will be set aside and protected by zoning. We think the rooftops behind it are necessary for us to attract a retail partner of ours to come there. However, by doing that zoning, we intended to be a part of the 2040 plan with commercial and a transition corridor, but that will forever protect it. We can go to the next slide. And this is where we'd love to have a conversation, but the two main takeaways that we had from planning were traffic concerns and that Fairview only has so much commercial land, we don't want to lose it, we want to protect it. We were able to meet with T-dot again on site, it's been a conversation we've had many times, and if you don't mind going back to our site plan, it's just easier to look at it up there. Traffic is a concern. T-dot admits commercial will bring more traffic than just our townhomes would. It's got more of an all-day type use instead of more of a commute pattern. Having that there certainly triggers, you'll see a designated left turn-in lane. It's minute on here, but it's critical. That would accommodate, as traffic merges onto Highway 100 headed into the city, there will now be a left lane to accommodate some overflow to get in, facilitate a safer intersection there. We obviously already had the D cell lane into our second entrance, which is required by fire code, that is a write-in, write-out only. But doing much more commercial than this, T-dot agreed is borderline a huge risk for the traffic there. And I will say that the traffic light conversation came up. That's not really a conversation for us as developer to have, T-dot made it clear, that's going to be more something of the desire of the city. So that's not something we're for or against, it's just not our place to have in the conversation. However, T-dot agreed that this was an acceptable amount of commercial with this amount of kind of traffic exit and entrance. So again, in recap, that would take you to almost 8,000 square feet of commercial in the corner. You would also have Thompson's Kitchen there. Phase three is obviously moved in the back. We truly believe that this activates a commercial corridor here and we would love to open it up for feedback and questions and hopefully here if we were able to at least address some of the concerns you all had.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Magner, you look like you got a question.
Thank you. And I apologize, I did not bring the RM 8 with me, so it might need some assistance from the staff, but I believe there is limitations in what commercial you can have if it's associated with RM 8, correct?
That's correct, but that front parcel wouldn't be the... Sorry, Ethan, go ahead.
That front parcel would remain zoned, Commercial General.
Okay, so that would not be limited to the 2,500 square feet?
That'd be correct. That would be the split zoning that they're speaking of.
Okay, then if I may, how does this process work if we approve RM 8 tonight? How do we know that it's going to come back and the commercial will follow through?
So tonight, tonight is just a recommendation, it's not a final decision, it's a recommendation to the board of commissioners. The whole, the whole parcel right now, because it's a single parcel, will have to be zoned per whatever the request is, so RM 12 or RM 8. So right now it would be the whole parcel, they would have to then down the road and at some point split that parcel and there would have to be a separate application to go back to commercial for the commercial parcel. So to answer your question, there's no guarantee, it'll require a separate zoning amendment that has to be approved by the BOC.
Thank you.
Our intent, and it's a challenge for us, we can't subdivide it as we don't own it right now, we're not the owner in talking with Ethan, we need to subdivide that and then rezone it. It's also a little odd, it's currently one parcel, but it has commercial and OTNC zoning on it right now. So there's a little discrepancy that that wasn't done right when zoning code was put in place.
I was about to ask how that worked because the post office exists on it.
And it shows a commercial zoning.
Unfortunately, I do not have an answer for how that was originally zoned, that was a little before my time, but I'm confident that staff's report on the current zoning status is correct, so.
Then if I may, I know there's a, we did talk a lot about traffic and I realize the, the state would have to own the traffic light. We addressed traffic eastbound entering into the property, but not eastbound heading towards Nashville, which I think was one of our stated concerns last month, so... Yes, sir, but I mean eastbound leaving the depart, like in the morning rush hour traffic, as you mentioned, that would continue to still be a dangerous intersection because we don't, we can't accommodate...
Open to a traffic light there, but I think that's a decision from the city. Our two contacts at T-dot, Jack Dickens and Stanley Summer indicated they need to hear that request coming from Fairview. And that's something that can be put into a development agreement on the developer, but it's not something we can request from T-dot.
Okay, thank you.
I think there is definitely some improvements that were made since the last time you were here a month ago with the parking and the, and the adding of the, of the commercial, as well as just the road improvements in general with the turn lanes and all of that. My question would be to Mr. Johnson's point as well as the citizen's comment earlier, it sounds like you're, you're open to this mixed use of this property, so why not take the steps to bring forward a, a pod zoning request instead of this, a flat RM 12 or RM 8, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'm happy to address that. We've been through that extensively with staff and that's where we started out. And unfortunately, it's time value of money for us as the developer. You have to horizontally plat everything within a pod the way we develop would be in phases. And instead of coming in and putting all infrastructure, we're able to start buildings in succession. It cuts our development time by months, if not a year. If we had to go pod and horizontally develop, it would be infeasible for us as a developer right now.
My personal concern isn't so much this particular development as you have, I know this is not, we're here just to discuss a rezoning, but it seems like we have gone further down the road in conversation, so... It's, it's just anytime we've, we put a flat zoning across an entire parcel, it's a, and nothing personal to you all, I mean, you guys make a great presentation, you seem like you're very engaged in this discussion. But I think as a lot of Fairview residents would, would attest, there's been plenty of good intentioned developments come in the past, get a flat zoning and then never hear from them again for years. Or, you know, it's just, it opens up a, a potential risk to the city. And I understand that there's more money that is required to do all that. I guess I would just like to have more discussion around, I guess, how everyone else feels about that.
I understand your concerns. If this site was subdivided now, if we were to subdivide it, come back, speak to you later and there was a commercial pad that was subdivided out of the, was it, what is the?
OTNC.
OTNC. And that was then zoned commercial, would the, would the process be commercial zoning, securing what everybody's concerned about, that not being commercial? And then coming back for the RM 8, is that the process that makes the most sense here?
It could all be done the same night, the same meeting.
Okay.
The same vote, the same motion to take care of both.
Missed, we missed that misunderstanding. We need to amend our application to such?
I know for me, to that point that you just mentioned, the concern that I have is not what you were proposing, it is what the zoning would then allow. So if you did do a subdivide of the parcel and had that, I know personally I would feel better about it. It, it's not going full pod overlay, but it's a happy medium in a way. But yeah, I think the overall concern is, is, does that commercial just get forgotten about, you know? And I, and I understand it, again, it's just the hypothetical could happen, right? So...
I think our, maybe it was a misunderstanding, was that there would be a condition of that zoning to subdivide that out prior to issuing building permits or something, maybe I'm wrong on that, but there was a process after this that that would then be subdivided once we owned the property and then prior to us moving forward with anything, it would be commercial and then the RM 8. But that process may be my misunderstanding.
So unfortunately, we can't do a conditional zoning that gets into a bit of legal contract zoning, which is not a good thing. So the zoning, what you proposed of having it split and coming forward one application to amend two different parcels, I think would satisfy that requirement, but I don't think we can put a condition on, on a zoning request.
If I can also just add then, there's also just, there's additional opinions, not just by the board, but expressed by the community. We're concerned about the, the higher density of developments. And unfortunately, with this particular track, you're forced to develop the portions that are, have the more appropriate topography. So I realize there's a business case there, but unfortunately, you know, the community is having to handle another extremely high density development. So just so you know, that, that continues to be a voiced concern and the trend that seems to have been happening.
And, and I would just add to that, we hear that, and you know, if the 2040 plan is wanted here and we think we're providing an affordable solution, this is under six units per acre, partially because of the usable piece of the land. This protects significantly more forestry than most. And the RM eight zoning by its nature protects from extremely high dense product. You're capped at two and a half stories. We would be a two-story product. As a developer, no, you would not be able to come in and do three-story flats and super densify this with an RM eight zoning. There is a little protection there as opposed to an RM 12 zoning that would absolutely open the door for something much more dense than this.
Any additional comments or questions?
I guess I would have a question, just... Would y'all want this voted on tonight, not knowing, or would y'all like to maybe do what you were just talking about and bring it back?
I think that we, we're at a little bit of a tight timeline with our seller. That puts us in a tough spot. I think in a perfect world, we would like to go, make sure we can get them on board with subdividing and coming back with a request that I think would protect what I'm hearing the concern is. It's going to put us at the mercy of our contract and our seller. So I think we probably should pursue that. At risk of jeopardy of...
I do want your recommendation.
Could, could we get feedback that if we were to be able to subdivide and go for that strategy, that is addressing the concern we're hearing? Are we hearing that correctly?
From my standpoint, absolutely.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
How quick could we get back? I guess that's, that's, our timeline is, is short fuse at this point. We're going to need to get some grace on our contract and also understand the logistics of getting that application done, getting... I, I think the subdivision itself takes survey work. It takes, you know, getting all of that done and recorded. And you're saying that would be voted on before it's recorded? Is that, is that what I'm hearing? So if we subdivided the property just on a survey, you've got two parcels. We have to record those two parcels. Is that recorded before or after this next meeting? Because we have a landowner we have to go get permission from to do this.
It would require approval from this board before it could be recorded as such, correct?
Well, didn't we just have a special meeting to?
Kind of have a, you, you already have a existing commercial use there, right? So all we're doing is we're simply just subdividing that commercial use out of the existing zoning, which doesn't match the use today.
I'll ask the staff, they probably, without me looking into the code, what the acreage requirement is for subdivision that requires approval by the P C. They may be able to split this into...
If it is over five acres, it can be divided by deed without some, a submission of a flat. So if it's 5.01 acres or larger, which obviously the townhome portion would be, if the commercial portion was larger than five acres, it could be transferred by deed, divided off by deed. That's state, that's state law. So that doesn't require a plot to come before you all.
And then to follow up on your, getting it subdivided and surveyed is the long end of the, or the long pole in the tent, so to speak. Getting it recorded is, is pretty quick after you have that done, so. Then, then you're, you're back getting a new application here.
So if we have two separate legal descriptions of two separate parcels, we would come in and only ask for the RM eight on one of the parcels. The other would stay as zoned currently, or would be, we'd be requesting that to be commercial zoning at the same application?
I'm glad you brought that up, because that's what I was gonna kind of step in here and say a little bit. So the majority of that property is currently noted as, what is it?
OT and C.
Yeah, OT and C. The small portion where the post office building is located is currently zoned commercial. However, that is all one parcel, so that is not two separate parcels. So obviously, you're going to be dividing off a larger commercial area than the post office currently sets on. So if you divide that off, it would end up being a split zone between commercial general and OT and C. So you would need to do two separate rezonings, uh, one for the townhouse portion, RM eight your request, and then the other subdivided off portion would need to be a request to essentially extend that commercial general to the remaining part of that. So it would be two separate rezoning requests that would come before you all, or would need to.
Can, can those be done simultaneously?
Absolutely.
Yes. It could be simultaneous, but it would have to be two separate requests.
So you're saying there's actually a section that's already commercial general, even though it's the same parcel?
That's correct.
So do we have any lines on that? It might even already incorporate some of their area where it didn't, it could already be just the area that's other non-conforming?
It doesn't, it doesn't, G I S does not provide acreage for that. However, it looks like it, it looks like it's barely past the parking areas for the U S P S.
Just checking.
Yeah, so it's not a very large area, but for whatever reason, uh, it was zoned commercial general and the remaining part was zoned OT and C.
I, I was curious, kind of same question. Is that a mistake, or could we not keep one parcel and then just define two different zonings, since that's how it is today?
It, it's possible to do that. A split zoning is not the cleanest way to do it. I think the, having the separate parcels split off, it's cleaner, it's very separate. This is residential, this is commercial. Uh, I think it would also address the concerns that the board is, has spoken about already. And I think it may end up being cleaner for you all in terms of your commercial, potential commercial lease client.
Agreed. My only concern is we're at the mercy of our seller and obviously they're going to be concerned about their parcel for the same reasons you are. If we don't go forward, now they're stuck with two different parcels and they may not want that. So we'll pursue it, but I wanted to know if there's another option, if we have to compromise.
One more question, because we can give a positive or negative recommendation to the board. Can we do a posman, positive recommendation with the split so that they just, before they go to the first B O C reading, they have to get it split?
I would defer back to your attorney on that. It kind of, that kind of ends up looking a little bit like contract zoning and that's, you really don't want to get into that legally speaking.
Yes, absolutely. I think you gotta make a recommendation on the application as presented.
Okay.
I would say we would prefer to not go votes there and let us come back, hopefully with the solution we've kind of devised together.
We'll come back as soon as possible. I think the timing for us is getting the two legal descriptions outlined. We're going to need to do a little bit more site planning to make sure that the, the legal descriptions fit the uses that we're wanting. And then from there, um, come back for same meeting, two agenda items.
New application.
If I may, though, the, the, the commercial portion of that parcel is a lot larger than what's showing on your site plan. So that will impact your, your number of units. And then as you stated earlier, T dot mentioned that they were, they had concerns, should we have a, a C G portion there and how that would impact the intersection? So I would just advise, make sure that...
Clarify that.
We understand the higher density of commercial versus residential and how that further impacts this, this intersection.
And I was, just to be clear, meeting on site with T dot, they recommended that this was probably about the max you would want to do a commercial and responsibly keep the access that we've designed with them.
Yeah, so the access will have to change.
If, if we exceed the 8,000 feet.
Right. This, this access now works with this total site plan, the way they, these two metrics is the distance between them, the distance between this and the on-ramp here. This worked for them, otherwise any additional commercial would, I don't know that they would recommend that. That was my indication from them.
Just as, as logistically, staff, is there... I'm sure you will work with them to get what they need in a timely fashion, but is there anything you see in this process that would push this out that they should be made aware of, just since they are working on a time stamp, so just being courteous of their time?
I don't think there's anything specific on our end that would push it out. I mean, I think these guys understand, I mean, just availability of a surveyor is going to be a, a big part of that.
Sure, yeah.
But I think from just a procedural process, I don't think there's anything that we would have that would push it out any farther.
Very good. So to be clear, you are asking us not to take action on this tonight, if, is that what you're?
That's correct.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
One last thing. Do you, do you foresee a possible problem with the seller? And the only reason I ask that, would a letter from staff or from our chairman saying what we're looking for y'all to bring back, if that would help? I thought that might be something that, that, that we should do if you run into trouble with the seller.
I do think that would be helpful. I think if they're going to subdivide their parcel that they may see as risky, knowing that that improves its chances would give them some peace, since ultimately we'll need them to do that.
So I would say just meet with them, do your due diligence and I guess let Chris or staff know should something be needed.
Appreciate that, yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
Go ahead.
Just any other questions for us?
Everybody good?
I would just advise be careful about...
Yeah.
Allowing some potential approvals before they're approved. I think that puts the city at risk.
It'll be consultation for sure.
Thank you.
We do have a motion on the table. So do we want to rescind the motion for approval? I believe it...
Is that the correct way to do that?
You can make a motion to defer from here and that'll be a...
Superseding?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. Is there a motion to defer?
No.
McDonald, Johnson. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling? Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. Magner?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Motion is deferred eight to zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate your feedback, appreciate your time.
We're going on to new business item number two, P C resolution, P C thirty-two dash two-three, annexation of seven one one four L Rod Road, six point two one acres, map zero two one, parcel zero two two point zero eight. Property owner Tammy J. Hyler and Jeffrey Pape.
Make a motion to approve P C thirty-two twenty-three?
Second.
Calley Shulist, and we will start with comments from staff.
The staff report for this project, uh, project summary, Mr. Jeffrey Pape has submitted to the city of Fairview an annexation request for one parcel located on L Rod Road. The property is located at seven one one four L Rod Road and is designated as tax map twenty-one, parcel twenty-two point zero eight. The property contains six point two one acres and is currently zoned M G A dash H municipal growth area Hamlet District. Properties to the south and west are also zoned M G A dash H. The properties to the north and east are located within the municipal boundaries of Fairview and are zoned RM eight multifamily residential. The attached boundary survey of the property illustrates the lot and the existing residents on the property. The lot is currently located within the urban growth boundary of the city of Fairview and is contiguous to tax map zero two one, parcel twenty-one point zero one. Given that the parcel is contiguous to the current Fairview municipal boundaries and that a large portion of L Rod Road is current, is located within the Fairview municipal boundaries, staff recommends the planning commission make a recommendation to the board of commissioners to approve this annexation request. If these properties are approved for annexation, the applicant has not requested a specific zone for each parcel. Therefore, the zoning of both of the property would be R S forty low density residential per the requirement found in section five one oh five of the Fairview zoning ordinance. Additional requirements related to the zoning of annexed property can be found in section seventeen dash one oh seven point nine of the Fairview zoning ordinance. The applicant's reason for their proposed annexation was, quote, "We do not simply, we do not intend to make any changes to the use of the property. The annexation request is simply to allow us to become eligible to vote in local Fairview elections as well as serve on Fairview city boards." Our staff recommendation does recommend the planning commission provide a recommendation to the Fairview Board of Commissioners to approve this request to annex the entirety of the property located at seven one one four L Rod Road, tax map twenty-one, parcel twenty-two point zero eight, as indicated on the boundary survey that was provided to you, with the following conditions of approval, that this would move forward to the board of commissioners meeting on October nineteenth.
Thank you. If the applicant is present and wants to join us.
Good evening, everybody. Jeff Pape, seven one one four L Rod Road again. I think Ethan covered it very well. Our intent is just to be able to participate more in the city and our tax bill wasn't quite high enough, so we thought we'd throw the city taxes on top of it. So I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
I have one. Would you, would you consider your parcel landlocked?
Uh, no, because we have an access easement to L Rod Road. So that, that's part of the, our plat, that we have an access easement.
What, what city street do you use to access your property?
L Rod, and that's the legal address.
And L Rod in front of that right there is the city street?
Correct, as far as I know.
So the entirety of L Rod is?
The parcel that is in yellow outside of the blue highlighted parcel, which is Mr. Pape's, that parcel touches L Rod Road in two places on both sides of his property and the city maintains from edge of pavement to edge of pavement of L Rod Road to the edge of that yellow parcel there.
The yellow parcel on the top left?
That's correct.
Do any of your neighbors want to join in?
Not as far as I know, but I didn't poll them all.
Did you poll some?
Most of them just asked about it and none of them had interest in annexing.
I appreciate you asking that question, because that was one I had as well, just due to our next agenda item that has, it's kind of similar to this one and it had, I think it's called out that the road it is used to access is not in city limits. So that was not made clear that L Rod is until just now. The only other thing that, that I saw was that the easement that you have, the access easement is 25 feet, correct?
I believe so.
So just any property that's within the city limits that would want to build and require an access easement is ours, I'm pretty sure our residential zoning regulations require a 50-foot access easement, correct?
That is correct.
So, I mean, that's, I had that and then with the, with the proper, with the road being whether it was county or not and whether or not the county would make us take it if we annexed a property that used that to get to it. I just, in my opinion, I mean, that's not the biggest of deals, but it is something that is, goes against our regulations if it was in city property or if in city limits.
But wouldn't it be, if the access season isn't, isn't wide enough, I just wouldn't be able to develop it for anything else?
You wouldn't be able to use it as an access easement, yes. It would have to be used for, other easements don't require 50 feet, it's just the access easement is 50 foot. That was all I had. That was all I had.
But it wouldn't prohibit him from still getting to his home because it would come as, in as a prior existing non-conforming use? Would that not be correct?
Are you asking staff for?
That's a good question. I, I would actually need to take a look at that, because it's not currently zoned. So, we'd be, we'd be bringing it in to RS40, subject to the conditions of RS40, but it's, obviously, you can't prohibit him from, from accessing it. I'd like to take a look at it to give you an, an accurate legal assessment of what, what that would be, but my, my intuition is that, yes, it's going to be some, whether it's technically grandfather status as a non-conforming use or just a property right that he has to get there. My, my intuition is, yes, he's going to be able to continue using it, but I can get you a formal answer on that.
Worst-case scenario, do you think you could get 25 more feet?
Yeah, if we had to, absolutely.
Okay.
But I, I would tend to lean toward that it's grandfathered in and that it's, especially with the fact that we're not developing anything. I, I did, I admit, I did not look at that part of the code, so I'll research that as well.
Wouldn't the grandfathered in come into play, though, if you were already in the city and had that, and then a regulation was brought not annexing in under our regulation? I mean, I don't think the grandfather idea works here.
Yeah, and, and that's what I was badly explaining to Commissioner Johnson. I, I don't know if grandfather is technically the right term, but my intuition is that, yes, he's going to be able to continue using it. Between now and this going to the BOC, I can get a legal opinion to the BOC on what.
Is it not called easement by necessity?
Different from zoning and land use law, but yes, there, there is such a thing, and, and he has a deed at easement, it sounds like, so he wouldn't need an easement by necessity, but the, the right to access the land is different from the regulations that the city puts on the land, so.
But it should just be RS40 non-conforming, like he can move on with life, be part of the city, and then if he, if someone was to buy the parcel and try to do something, then it has to start conforming. We still, you know?
That is correct, and that's if, if down the road, something wanted to happen, then yeah, they'd need to buy an easement to get it 50 foot.
Any additional comments? Ms. Maria, if you call the roll, please.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling? Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Magner?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero. Moving on to PC resol, new business item number three, PC Resolution PC 33-23, Annexation 7857 and 7859 Crowcut Road, 10.08 acres, map 012, parcel 026.04, 026.10. Property owner Paul Creed and Carla Ann Creed. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion not to approve PC 32, 3323.
Is there a second? Hearing none. Motion dies.
The property owners here.
Yeah, we didn't get that far yet.
Why don't, I mean, I feel like the whole thing needs to be read into the record, but I think we were advised to always have a positive motion to make it less confusing, and then we can vote no. So, why don't I'll do a motion for yes to start discussion?
Second.
Shulist Johnson, no, I'm sorry, Senor Johnson, the positive motion to approve. City staff, you would give us your comments, please.
Mr. Paul Creed has submitted to the City of Fairview an annexation request for two parcels on Crowcut Road. The properties are located at 7857 and 7859 Crowcut Road and are designated as tax map 18, parcel 26.02 and parcel 26.10. The property at 7857 Crowcut Road contains 5.05 acres, and the property at 7859 Crowcut Road contains 5.02 acres. Both properties are currently zoned MGA-5 Municipal Growth Area District 5. All surrounding properties are also zoned MGA-5. The attached boundary survey of the property illustrates the two lots and the existing residents on each property. Both lots are currently located within the urban growth boundary of the City of Fairview, but are not contiguous to any parcel of land that is currently within the municipal boundaries of Fairview. Additionally, the portion of Crowcut Road these lots front onto is a county roadway and is maintained by the county. Given that both parcels are not contiguous to the current Fairview municipal boundaries, and that Crowcut Road is a Williamson County road and therefore maintained by the county, staff does not recommend to the Planning Commission, that the Planning Commission make recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to approve this annexation. If these properties are approved for annexation, the applicant has not requested a specific zone district for each parcel. Therefore, the zoning would come in as an RS40 Low Resi, Low Density Residential, per the requirement found in Section 5105 of the Fairview Zoning Ordinance. The applicant's reason for proposed annexation is they would like to annex into Fairview and divide the 10 acres of property into three 3.3 acre lots that will be given to their three children. Staff does not recommend the Planning Commission provide a recommendation to the Fairview Board of Commissioners to approve the request for annexation due to it not being contiguous with the municipal boundaries of Fairview and it being accessed from a county maintained road.
Was that disseminated to the property owners?
That has been communicated.
Is there someone representing the applicant here that would like to join us? No, okay. Yeah, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, was that the only question you had, or?
Well, now, I mean, now knowing that there's no one here, I mean, we can't, we can't vote to deny them or approve them really and truly, since they're not present, but.
They aware that it was on the agenda?
The communication was through IDT to the applicant. I was unable to have a phone conversation with them.
Should we just defer this one until next meeting, because the applicant's not present, and we can make sure to get a letter out to them? Make them aware that they will be on the November agenda? Or counsel, is that required, or what would you suggest?
I don't think that it's necessarily required, unless we think that they somehow didn't have noticed that this is going to be on the agenda tonight. And maybe it would be a good, good policy to, the agenda is publicly posted, so if they have a pending application, they should be aware of it. It sounds like they received notice that it was receiving an unfavorable recommendation, so I do think this is a case where the board can take action despite their absence. The, the meeting was publicly posted, the agenda's public notice, so since we've complied with those requirements, their absence, I think you can still take action. And your vote is not final, it's a recommendation to the BOC.
Correct. If I'm not mistaken, if we did, as we discussed on that last one as well, if, if we do, if the city does not own the road, and we annex in a property that uses that road and it's county, the county will basically say it's yours now, you get to maintain it, correct? So, it becomes a financial burden on the city as, that's something to take into consideration, correct?
Yes.
Say that more for the audience, but thank you. Any other comments? Good? If you will call the roll, Ms. Maria.
Ms. Senyard?
Nay.
Mr. Johnson? Ms. Schilling?
Nay.
Ms. Shulist?
Nay.
Mr. McDonald?
Nay.
Mr. Calley?
Nay.
Mr. Magner?
No.
Ms. Williams?
Motion does not pass seven to zero with one abstention. Moving on to new business, PC number, item number four, PC Resolution PC 34-23, Site Development Plan, White's Landscaping, 3.2 acres, map 023, parcel 039.01. Address Zero Fairview Boulevard, current zoning CG Commercial General. Property owner, White's Landscaping. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve PC 3423. Second.
Calley Magner, and we will start with city staff comments, please.
Before this project is discussed, we wanted to state that there are comments related to the engineering and planning that need to be addressed, but the applicant has communicated to us that, that he is more than willing to address these comments. The site plan is on tonight's agenda in an effort to progress this project along, since it has been in the review process for an extended period of time. The comments for engineering were provided last Wednesday, therefore, the applicant has not yet had adequate time to address all of these comments, but again, he plans to do so. If the Planning Commission desires to approve this site plan contingent upon these comments being addressed or defers this agenda item until the next Planning Commission meeting, we would be in agreeance with either of those decisions. In addition, the applicant has also stated that there was some confusion on IDT on the supplemental process, and in response to that, we are restructuring the process and restructuring IDT to make it more user-friendly for applicants. That is all.
Thank you. Is there someone representing the applicant or the applicant themselves that would like to come? Oh, I'm sorry. Ethan, did you have more to add? You can still come up, he's got a little bit more to add, and then we'll move to you. Thank you.
Tonight in the resolution, there are a few conditions of approval. First condition of approval would be approval of variance pursuant to the City of Fairview Design Review Manual, Section 2-104.1 Architectural Design Review, Architectural Design and Building Requirements. That speaks to the 70% brick requirement. And another would be an approval of an in lieu of payment for sidewalks. And then all remaining staff comments to be addressed and approved by staff prior to pre-construction conference. A T-dot highway entrance permit required prior to pre-construction conference. Plan set to be approved by all utility providers prior to pre-construction conference, and provide all documentation of all applicable state and federal permits prior to pre-construction meeting. And those are the conditions of approval on this resolution.
Thank you. Sir, if you can join us now.
Yeah, I was just, I've been working with all of them quite a bit, and I first submitted on 7:30, and obviously, I know it takes time, and then Ethan and all of them gave me what I needed to fix, and I fixed it as quick as possible, but on the first time of the stuff that I needed to fix, the engineering and the water and sewer never was on there. So, I re, resubmitted it 8:16, the revised, and then they got back to me, and I had a list of engineering and water and sewer that was not on the initial list that I got off the, off the IDT or whatever it's called. So, that's why it has taken me a little bit longer to get all this stuff done, because I, like you said, I just got it Wednesday afternoon, I think at like 3:30 or 4 o'clock. And with the weekend right around there, and then meeting today, I've already talked to my architect and everybody. They're going to get everything fixed, I just need a little more time to do it. So, that is what I am working on right now, but everything that's on this list will be fixed prior to them issuing me a permit as it has to be. I'm just trying to get the building approved so that I can move forward with everything before the permit.
Thank you. You, you might want to stick around, just in case there's some questions for you. Thank you.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
Uh, yes, sir, we do. Calley Magner, seconded by Magner.
I'd like to amend the motion to include the staff's requirements. It'll need a second.
I will second that.
Johnson, Magner with the second on the amendment to the motion.
And as well as, we also have to address the variance request. And so, let's talk about your, your, your brick variance. We, we have a few projects in town. Most of, most of the projects that we've allowed the, the reduction of masonry are because the projects are set back further. You know, it's hilly topography, there's a lot of trees. I realize your, your facility's, you know, 2,500 square feet, but what's preventing from at least trying to create the frontage masonry look?
It's going to have a four foot all the way around it stone at the bottom, and then the road frontage at the property is only about 100 foot of road frontage. So, where the building sits, it kind of sets down a little bit. It's probably 150, 200 feet from the road where the building, front of the building is going to sit, so it's not going to be very visi, visible from the road. It's going to have a front gable on it to enhance the front, it's going to have columns and then the stone, so it's not going to look like your ordinary, just, you know, metal building. It'll be enhanced with nice garage roll-up doors, and, and the whole property right now is surrounded by trees and brush all the way around. It probably has a 15-foot border around everywhere besides the road frontage up there in the front, has trees and brush all the way around it where it's not visible to other houses.
So, I take the, the far right exonometric, that would be what would be visible from Highway 100, is that?
The far right, where are you talking about now?
The, the, the far right rendering.
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, okay, I see what you're talking about.
That's kind of the front.
Right, and it'd have four foot of stone on the bottom, and then those, the gable kind of area that hangs down, it would have nice wooden beams with stone around them as well. It has garage doors, it's not just going to be slider doors, they will be roll-up doors, so it won't be.
Staff, do I remember that metal, like a metal building was not supposed to be at all, like the metal is the side, the exterior material in the design manual?
It is a prohibited item, but that would be a part of that approval of variance to the architectural design and building requirements.
That seems very confusing in the language there.
The bottom far-right picture is the one that will face, and it will be turned, and it sets at an angle, so you will not, the way the property sets, if you look at the layout, the road kind of goes at an angle there, and you can see the way the building is, so as driving by, it will not be extremely visible because of the lay of the property. Now, as far as the met-
100 foot of road frontage?
Yes, sir. It's about, it's a little over 100, it might be 105 feet. So, and my landscaping plan would be to screen it with green giant arbivitas and all of that eventually, but we're still working with that with engineer, because I just got all of that back.
I do have a couple of questions. I'd like to start with just saying, I, I do have some concern, and no offense to the applicant, but so be, I think, the second building of this nature that we've approved to be built here in town. And I'm just wondering, at what point do we go too far down that road to where our design review manual no longer means a whole lot? Because we've set the precedent that we have said yes so many times that saying no becomes difficult. Just something to keep in mind. I, I do have a couple of specific questions, though. Is the, is, is this going to be paved? Will the driveway be paved, or is it gravel?
It's a gravel entrance.
Is there? I looked, I couldn't find any, I, I feel like there was a property on Highway 100 not too long ago that we, I say we, the city made them pave it. It was a gravel parking lot, and they were, they were forced, I believe, in order to open a business, they had to pave that. Is there not anything requiring that? Is there not anything requiring that in this commercial space?
Our ordinance calls out for, it's a basis on how many parking spaces are required. That parking spaces, if you require five or more, you're required to pave unless the board places that as a condition onto the applicant. Five or more, his building here requires three parking spaces, and so he is under the five. He has, in the plans that I've seen, it has concrete shown on the, as the drive access point.
Sounded like it was going to be gravel.
Well, it's going to be gravel, like the parking area. I'm not going to pave the whole thing. So that's what we're still working with the engineer and everything to get it all, get it all taken care of. I can do it either way. It's not going to be a retail place, so it's not going to have customer service where people are driving in and out all day. So it'll be more for my landscaping products as far as my plants and stuff to keep there and, you know, a couple of trucks and trailers.
Current site plan shows concrete. We were notified by the applicant that it's actually gravel, so it's just a mistake on the site plan designer's part. And I did visit the site. It does have a gravel pad currently. So they're going to update that in the site plan to show that as existing condition. So, yes, his intent is to have a gravel driveway.
Is there going to be a sign out front?
No, sir.
Any signage? And then the other thing that I couldn't find in the documents that were provided is to what level of landscaping will be done to the property?
Oh, like I said, it's got a hundred foot in the front. All you'll have is a sixteen-foot gate coming into the property, and the rest will be screened off with green giant arbivitas. So the whole property will be shielded with trees because the rest of the property, as is, is already shielded with trees and brush around it. I personally don't like anybody being able to see anything I own because of stealing and everything else that goes on. So I would not like it to be visible from the road or any side of the property.
Would that be another variance that would have to be included if he's not planning on doing any additional landscaping to the site?
He meets the buffer requirements for all the way around his site because it is currently wooded, except for where he wants to build. It's an open field there in the middle of the site. So he meets that. He would have to, he has not submitted a landscape plan currently, and that would be coming to do the landscape at the entrance.
I would just tend to agree. I'm sympathetic of your company, but I am also afraid of the precedent that we set when we don't abide by that. And it kind of, we need to amend it to the point where if something is not visible, it kind of doesn't make sense. But at the same time, we could have another applicant come up next month and continue to ask for something, and before long, our city's not going to look the way, especially getting into a fairly large boom of construction activity. So, you know, personally, I'm sorry to say that-
Oh, no, I get it.
I think that it just still has to meet the architectural requirements.
So what you're, are you saying that no metal at all? Because the metal creates a better barrier for what I'm trying to use it for than pretty much any other product? Or are you saying that I need to add more stone to the front to give it a more of a, a better visual from the front? Because the sides and the back cannot be seen from any other part of the place? So should I make your seventy percent in the front of stone? Would that please y'all so that the front of the building is seventy percent stone? Or are y'all saying in general, none? I mean, I like metal roofs. My house now has a metal roof.
Yeah.
You know, it's personal preference, but I understand that y'all are wanting a look for the City of Fairview. Would it, do I need to make the front more pleasurable, or what is y'all's all-around?
I think this would be the third metal issue that we've had. The one on the interstate, I was a no one. I know it did get approved, but it was a metal building set off the interstate, and I think that was why it was a no. The last one, I believe, had to do with Phase Three, and theirs was a metal siding, not a metal building. But we approved the lower wainscoting of stone or brick. And he had a whole look. There was a whole very decorative thought process to it that had been put together. I think we've talked about revising the design manual a couple of times to the lower, so I have no problem with the lower, but if you're going to go with a metal building, my personal opinion would be that we need at least the two sides angled to the road to be seventy percent stone. But I think at least the renderings are not very specific. Look to me like a metal corrugated building, which I think is what we were trying to prevent in the design review manual.
And I would tend to agree with that. It would be elevations that are visible from a public right away. So in this case, you'd have the two elevations since it sets at an angle.
You have the top, you're saying, the, what two sides are you talking about? The top and the front, or?
If I'm interpreting your renderings, it would be the far-right two renderings.
No, sir, just the, just the front would be. Far-right one.
If you built the building square to the road, you would be correct in the statement you just made, but you said-
Oh, I see what you're saying, because the way it's setting on that plan right there, okay. I see what you're saying.
So if you change the position of where you're going to build it and square it to the road, then you'd only have the one side visible.
I see what you're saying now. So y'all are saying that the two showing sides, either that or change the pitch of the building straight with the road so that you'd only see the front? Yes, sir, I see what you're saying now.
Or do cementous siding or something that's allowed material for the?
I can do whatever. Do y'all do hardy board? Do y'all rather it be hardy board than metal? I can do hardy board. I mean-
I think that's consistent with the design intent.
Okay, but is the metal roof okay?
Think we have anything that addresses the roof, do we?
Yeah, I think it's a siding requirement.
Roof should be fine.
Only siding.
Yeah.
Okay, so siding, okay. So I need to resubmit, or could we put that in the application? Is that needs to be changed? Or what do we need to go?
That can be a condition added to the motion.
Okay, that's the metal siding gone and add, only on the front two sides, or y'all want the whole building?
Let me ask Steph a quick question. The design needs to be part of this site plan? Or can be part of like the next submittal that comes along? Can we just deny the variance for a whole thing, and then that comes back? Because isn't there another submittal that needs to come, or no?
This is the only submittal that you will see from this. Construction drawings will come later in the future, and those are approved by staff.
Okay.
I would make a motion to a conditional approval on the variance to architectural compliance to state that the two elevations most visible to the public right away should comply with the design intent.
Then y'all have, I had to ask for a variance for sidewalks. There's no sidewalks in that area right now. Would y'all want that to be put into a bond, or what do y'all request on that?
Steph, what's the front of the lot grading-wise? Is it available? Is there a big issue putting in sidewalks?
Currently, it is a ditch. If you're familiar with the area. Keith, could you go back to the GIS map?
Point of order. We've got-
Second.
A motion. We've got an amendment, and now we have another motion. I feel like things are getting a little sideways with the motions here, so just one second.
So the, Mr. Johnson's, or Commissioner Johnson's motion to amend, the first motion to amend, I believe he requested to amend, to add the staff comments. And when I look at the resolution, it appears that staff has drafted it with those conditions already on the resolution. So I think the simplest-
I will remove my motion.
That's what I would recommend. And now you have one motion to amend with a condition that the two sides facing the road comply with the design review manual. There's a second on that motion. So the question on the floor is whether or not this resolution should be amended to add a condition that the two sides facing the road comply with the design review manual.
Right, because the variance was included as part of the submission.
So you need to vote on whether or not to amend this, and then once the amendment goes in or out, then you're back to voting on the resolution.
Okay.
I'd like to ask a question real quick. If you amend the two sides of the building, does it truly amend this approval of the variance that is in the resolution currently? So he's already got a variance for the architectural design of the building. Believe, you know, any form of changing the architecture of the building is a variance. So it is listed in the resolution, but if we want to get more specific, we can. I just wanted to ask that question.
Correct, because we're allowing the variance on the backside of the building. We're not allowing it on the visible side. So I think we're just, we're getting a little sideways with our-
Previously, it listed each side with the percentages of each thing because like the metal's not listed in that variance. And so we're leaving it up to y'all to determine that in this one, I think it's worded very poorly, not very specific. And previously, they've been very specific so that it's locked into what's drawn.
Also, other variances that need to have consideration, not just this particular one. Which is going to make the vote even more twisted. I just think we're getting, we're trying to do, change a lot here. With it being worded the way it is, I'm not sure if we're going to reach the conclusion that we're hoping for. It's just a concern. I don't know how to fix it.
I would recommend moving forward with the, with the motion to amend that Commissioner Magnner stated. I think that addresses the specifics of what you were requesting. It will still require variance, but now that variance is for the specific thing that Commissioner Magnner stated.
And again, the only question I have is it kind of locks the applicant into the two sides. So if he decides to rotate that building where it's parallel with the road frontage, then, you know, technically, based on the discussions today, he would only have to have a variance for the front of the building if he desired to do that. But I guess if you add something that specific, it may prevent him from rotating the building.
Thank you. I think part of the amendment was-
Visible from the road.
Visible, elevation's visible to the public right away. So hopefully that would, because you're right.
Wouldn't he have to revise the site plan anyway? So it would have to come back because it'd be a change?
I believe that would be a minor change. Not required to come back before the Board of Planning.
So we will take roll call on the amendment as stated by Mr. Magnner and seconded by Mr. Johnson. Correct? Ms. Maria, if you can call the roll, please.
All right, so for which one are we voting on?
Your amendment.
My amendment. Okay.
The passes, just to add this amendment to the motion.
The architectural variance to the two sides. Thank you.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Motion is amended. So you had mentioned sidewalks. It states in here, conditions of approval. The approval of the in lieu of payment for the sidewalks. Has that clearly been stated to the applicant on the cost of that and what that would include?
There's a comment currently on IDT that states sidewalk requirement variance to please provide engineered construction cost estimation for the sidewalks as determined by current published average unit prices to value the funds in lieu of the sidewalk.
Okay, and that's, you understand that part?
Yes, sir, I do. That's why I brought it up is because there's no sidewalks there, so I have no problem putting it to the fund for wherever else y'all install sidewalks at.
The other thing on IDT, and I don't know, maybe some of that's taken care of. Maybe I'm just not looking at it correctly, but there was like twenty-two, like, unread items from staff comments that I couldn't figure out if they had been resolved or not. I'm sure they will be. That's all part of it. It just seemed like a lot compared to past site plans I've looked at. So is that a concern of staff, or is that just paperwork that needs to be finalized? Or do you have your answers? Are there any, I guess, concerns that are worth mentioning outstanding at the moment?
So that goes back to what I stated before, before we discussed the project, that, you know, due to some delays, that he received comments last Wednesday, so he hasn't had applicable, I'm sorry, the appropriate amount of time to address these comments.
Any additional comments or questions from the board?
Sorry, y'all were saying that there is a ditch, so in order for him to put a sidewalk in, there would have to be buried stormwater infrastructure effectively. It'd be much more than just putting in a sidewalk at this moment.
So all of those items that require that sidewalk to be put in, he would be providing in his engineered construction cost. So that entire cost would be shown to us. We would approve it, and we would say, hey, here's the, here's the cost that you need to pay in lieu of the sidewalk.
So that's new.
I understand that.
Okay, I think it's good, but I just, that is totally new.
Would you mind sharing your previous impression of it?
It was set at a number, a percentage of a number by T dot?
Seventy-five percent of T dot's costs per linear foot.
We've had this discussion many times because I thought too many people paying into the sidewalk walk-in tree fund, we should probably raise the prices.
It's in design review manual. I'm going to pull it up real quick.
I'm not saying you're not right. That sounds really good. So excited.
I just, I want to make sure that we're speaking the language that the document has.
Wait, wait, is this business open to the public? Will you have foot traffic coming in and out, or are you?
No, sir.
No, okay.
Also, while he's looking that up, we typically have to look at fire truck access for site plan approval. Is that, was that a condition? Did you have to look at that?
The only thing I had from the fire department was knockbox and-
Yeah.
That was already on the plans that I guess they didn't see on there.
Okay.
So I had already fixed that on the revised plans to them, and I resubmitted that.
Okay, and? Because he has a gable.
The driveway is twenty-foot wide with a sixteen-foot gable. I didn't have any notes for that. No, sir.
Okay.
As I see right here.
That's a requirement of the approval process for the fire chief to sign off on that as well as police and all that.
So I just assumed that would be part of-
It might be caught up in the delayed stuff, but yeah, that will be.
I never saw anything from, the only thing I got from the fire was the knockbox and the monitoring system.
Great, and that was going to be my second question, so you answered that. Thank you.
All right. So in the zoning ordinance, the sidewalk requirement variance. I'll just, I won't read the beginning of it, but "The valuation of any funds remitted to the City of Fairview shall be, shall not be less than seventy-five percent of the engineered construction cost as determined by current published average unit prices." So I don't want to speak on the intentions of previous staff, but to my understanding, this means that minimally seventy-five percent is what is required by the zoning ordinance. And it's just by current published average unit prices. Doesn't have to be T dot. That's why we, as a staff, have put it on the applicant to provide this is what it should cost to, if we had to put this sidewalk in, this is what it would cost. And then we would approve that cost estimation as a staff and then present it to you all.
Do you require three bids?
Sorry?
Do you require three bids to reference, or is it just one?
It's just, it's just a probable cost of estimation that's provided by the design engineer that is acting on behalf of the applicant.
Okay.
For, bring it back on topic here. Any other questions for the applicant? Ms. Maria, if you could call the roll, please.
Can we remind which amendment and what we're voting on?
Original motion.
Original motion to approve.
I believe the question is to approve Resolution 34-23 as previously amended.
Thank you.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. Magners?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling? Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling, if you could, we're, we just need your vote and we'll move on. Motion carries eight zero. Thank you, sir.
You have a good night.
All right, Bonds, moving on Bonds' letter of credit, there are none. We will go to staff reporting, starting with planning.
Thank you all for your continued dedication to the city of Fairview. And just to give an update, so we will have a training prior to the November 14th Planning Commission meeting. That should wrap up just about everybody's training for the rest of the year if you are still lacking hours to meet your four-hour requirement. Kevin Chastain with Grigs and Maloney, our AICP planner on staff, will be, uh, the trainer for that. There are a couple of other items. The IDT training. So, I know IDT's been challenging for several of you. It has also been a challenge for myself and they did not send me a link to the training. They posted it on IDT and I had no idea how to access that. So, I will now be seeing, I got a email on Friday about the link because I was like, where is this link that we've been telling you that you would have? So, I will send out a, I can't copy the link from IDT, so I have to send you out instructions on how to access IDT. Or if you would like to, we can meet right here after this meeting and I can show you how to access it on IDT. And, and that's about it that I have for planning staff updates.
Appreciate it. City manager, you got anything for us this evening?
I have one item. I didn't realize that there was some personal information, phone numbers on the website. Those have been removed. Only thing on the website is, is your current city email. I think the Board of Commissioner members still have their phone numbers on there. Thank you.
Thank you. Engineering.
So, just wanted to notify the Planning Commission that with our new staff dynamic, we are evaluating the intricacy of the agenda item reports as well as the staff reports. We would like to know the expectation of these reports from the, from the Planning Commission and provide a service that's beneficial to you, to all of you and have it look the way you want it to look, the way it's understanding and, and efficient. We would like for you all to think about these reports over the next month and evaluate their current benefits and note any ideas or improvements that can be made to the help, to help the Planning Commission. If there is any current discussion that is desired, please feel free to discuss.
What is the best conduit to express our findings to you all? An email or do we save that for the work session in November? Or how do you want us to go about that?
Probably email.
Careful.
No, no, please. I, I keep track of my email very well, so, and if I, if I don't answer in a timely manner, please feel free to call.
Sure.
And also, I'm in the office typically minimally three days a week, so.
Sounds good.
Any of those.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
Uh, no report. Thanks for having me. Mr. Carter will be back next week, pinning your questions.
Mr. Magners, we'll start down there with you today.
I appreciate you preparing for us for the training, so thank you for doing that. Also for asking about the staff reports. I know over the last several months, it, it gets challenging because we have to rely on the staff or the staff just like, you know, trust us, we'll take care of it. So, really appreciate you asking that question. Thank you.
Mr. Callie?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Nothing for me?
Commissioner Johnson?
Nothing, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right, moving right along. Ms. Schilling, do you have anything for us this evening?
No, thank you.
Ms. Williams?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
And Ms. Senyard?
Um, I'm just really excited to hear about the sidewalk. That's great.
Um, well, I had notes and I don't know where they went. I appreciate the training in November coming up. It sounded like that's going to be on all things Planning Commission, just in general, for the board to just recognize that. So, come prepared with any questions or areas that you would like to have a little bit more knowledge or working knowledge of. I'm sure that'll, that'll lead to some really good discussion. And I appreciate everybody sitting through that last one. I think we've got some things ironed out, hopefully with the training and everything that that takes care of some of it. Not that it was bad discussion. I think there was good discussion there, but, um, yeah, that's all I have. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.